Good afternoon and welcome to the May 20th formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Thank you so much for joining us here today. I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with a roll call.
Councilman DeCecio? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark? Councilman Waring?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Councilmember Stark, I just wanted to do a quick audio check if that's okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Our interpreter Mario Barajas is available in the council chambers for those who need services with Spanish. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G 6697 through 6702, S 46551, 46608 through 46646, and resolutions 21824 through 21830.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on the boards and commissions?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We next go to the liquor license portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items two through 16.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilwoman Pastor?
Correct.
Roll call.
DeCecio? Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Waring.
Oh, I'm on now, sorry.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was having problems on my other computer, sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Your vote on items two through 16?
Councilwoman Stark, do you support the liquor license applications on two 16 through 16?
Oh, yes, I do, yes, I'm sorry.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion to approve items 17 through 92 except the following. Item 21, 28, 30, 31, 32, 33, 35, 51, and 92. Item 50 is requested to be continued to June 3, 2020. And item 87 is requested to be continued to June 17, 2020. Items 32 as revised. And excluding these items for public comment, 89, 90, and 91.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio? Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Eight, zero.
We next move to item 21, which is a payment to Go Invest for Pension Actuarial Calculations software.
Mayor, I have a potential conflict and won't participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 21.
Second. We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Pastor, roll call.
DeCecio? Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Waring?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven, zero.
We next move to item 28, which is a payment to the University of California, San Diego for the Water Department to complete professional development. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 28.
Oh, sorry. Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilwoman Williams. Any council member questions or comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Mayor?
And Councilman Waring, yes.
I'm sorry, I think I've got delay on my phone, I apologize. So, it sounds like you heard me there. I just, for staff, I was just curious, you know, we're using an out-of-state school. I had asked this question, I didn't get a response back. I'm just curious, do the local universities or Grand Canyon, Publix and then Grand Canyon or whoever not do this kind of work?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, one moment, we have Kathryn Sorensen coming to answer that question while she gets situated. Kathryn?
Mayor, councilmember, this particular training is specialized OSHA training. It's for, it's actually, out of UCSD is the certification, but it's held here locally. And it's for trenching, fall protection, and shoring. This training is what we use to actually train our trainers so they can turn around and then provide the safety classes to our staff.
So it sounds like, Mayor Kathryn, you have to go through the University of California, San Diego. I just want to make sure that, you know, our guys were getting a fair shake here in Arizona. But it sounds like that's the case, is that correct?
Right. Mayor, councilmember, let me clarify, yeah, so UCSD is established as the regional OSHA training institute, but it's actually here in Tempe.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, that's funny, thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Wonderful, thank you, Councilman Waring and Director Sorensen. We'll restart roll call.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Waring, was that a no? Yes. Sorry about that.
Yes, oh, that's okay.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight, zero.
We next move to item 30, which is a public hearing prior to adopting the local alternative expenditure limitation for the November 3 ballot. I will open the public hearing. We have not received any comment cards from any members of the public wishing to comment. So I will close the public hearing. At this time, I will reset the formal meeting and convene a special meeting of the Phoenix City Council for the adoption of a local alternative expenditure limitation for referral to electors of the city of Phoenix. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio? Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Councilman Waring?
Uh, no. Or here, excuse me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado?
Here.
Mayor Gallego?
Here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 30.
One.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, a motion to approve item 31 and adopt the related resolution?
Yes, I'm sorry, item 30, yes.
Thirty-one. All right, we have a motion on item 31 and the related resolution and...
Second.
And a second, roll call.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No, and this time I mean it.
Thank you. Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven to one.
Wonderful. I now adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the May 20th, 2020 formal city council meeting. We next move to item 32, request to enter into contract with Arizona Community Action Association, known as Wildfire for COVID-19 Emergency Utility Rent and Mortgage Assistance Services. Do we have council member comments or a motion?
Second.
Second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. We do have several members of the public wishing to address the council on these items. We'll go with...
Mayor, this is the clerk.
Mayor.
Could you clarify the motion maker, please, and the second?
I made a motion.
Thank you.
My second.
Thank you.
So motion from Councilwoman Stark and second from Councilwoman Williams. We'll begin with Luke Black, followed by Vidi Hernandez.
Good afternoon, or good morning, afternoon, members of council. Just want to really just quickly start, this is the second day in a row that this public comment submittal process has really failed folks. Yesterday, there were at least a dozen people who signed in to speak over the phone who were not let in. And today, your system crashed long before 1:30 and did not allow people to register. Now, we're having the email comments in, and who knows if they're even going to be accepted, so here we are. Pivoting to that and to this motion to 32, I've really been unimpressed with the lack of courage from this council. This pandemic has really created a moment when we need leadership and courage, and you really have failed to illustrate courage. You have set aside millions in aid, but that didn't take courage to move federal money from one place to another. It was the bare minimum, and I really just think y'all should stop patting yourself on the back for doing the bare minimum. Courage in this moment looks like standing up for all of the residents in Phoenix, especially those who are undocumented. It takes courage to stand up to Trump's agenda of hate. It requires courage to stand up to SB 1070 and Prop 200. We need leaders, especially you, Mayor Gallego, who will stand up courageously for the people that Trump is trying to erase. We need leaders who will stand against Arizona's hateful legislation. Are there going to be legal hurdles to creating, to funding undocumented folks and supporting undocumented folks? Yes, but have the courage to challenge what is clearly evil. Have the courage to be innovative and find ways around the hurdles that people put up because they hate people. Please set an example and stand with the people of this city and find a way to support undocumented communities. Thank you.
Next to the speak is Vidi.
Hi, this is Vidi Hernandez Hernandez. We, yes, so echoing the system and figuring out a way that people can access to make their comments heard. Yesterday, over 200 people made a comment about this, so we hope that those are also considered. Asking and really showing and telling the pain and the fear that a lot of our communities are facing because of COVID. We are in agreement that funding and relief needs to go out. We're in agreement that in this moment, that this money that came, right, that is not of the city that was given by the federal, yeah, by the federal government to be given to communities directly. And we heard over 200 people make that same comment, so please look at those comments, take those comments in, and also do something different. This money needs to go out also to undocumented families. Undocumented families have been supporting the city for decades. We pay taxes, we pay local taxes, state taxes, federal taxes, we do census. You know, our families are directly contributing to the city. The city directly benefits and profits from undocumented people. And we're asking city leadership to take a stand, we're asking city leadership to partner. There's a lot of private funds to do partnerships, to raise money as a city and stand with undocumented people in this moment of crisis. How we decide to spend our money right now and in this moment is going to impact generations to come. And we just want to make sure that that impact is a healthy impact for Phoenix. And that impact is something that centers well, making sure that undocumented people are included in every relief support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. For our staff, is there anyone else waiting to speak?
No, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mayor?
I think it is important to note that there are community-led efforts in place that have mobilized to work with and place, serve undocumented residents of Phoenix that are very worthy of this community's support. This effort, while led through a coalition, resides at the Arizona Community Foundation. It's our understanding that the first round of nonprofits has just been selected and will soon begin providing services. And I wanted to clarify with the maker of the motion, Councilwoman Williams, and the secondary, Councilwoman Stark, that the motion was to approve item 32 as revised.
Yes.
Correct.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilman Nowakowski?
Mayor, a concern, are there individuals that can't get through? Did our system crash? And are we going to fix that, or what's the resolve in resolving that? Because I think it's very important that all of us, including yourself, I know we all want to hear community input on this process. So can I get an update on that, please?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, Deputy City Manager Tony Macaron has been overseeing the system with IT and the City Clerk Department, and she can answer that question.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. This is the first that this was brought to our attention, and I have IT looking into it to see if the system quote-unquote crashed. We do have a number of people who sent in comments today, and also lots of people who are signed up to speak. So that's the first that we've learned about the quote-crash of the system. But IT is looking into it as we speak.
Thank you, Tony, and can I get a full report on that, once you get that information gathered, please?
Absolutely, I'm happy to share that with the mayor and council, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, so, I, I think yesterday I made a mistake and failed to acknowledge the numerous messages and the folks on the calls that were asking us to support undocumented folks. And I, I follow in their sentiment. I think in order, especially during this time, this crisis, I think it's important for us to try to support as many people as possible, documented or not. Everyone works with each other, lives around each other, and so I think it's important to continue to find ways to support everyone in the city in order to make sure that everyone's healthy and taken care of. Undocumented people are not eligible for unemployment or a lot of the other services. I continue to think that these care funds can be used for undocumented people. But, as you said earlier in social media, the diversity in our city is what makes us great. And I hope that we can celebrate that diversity by supporting anyone, everyone in the city. And so I know there's, our legal department has concerns with these funds. And so I want to echo your sentiment to make sure that we all support the Arizona Undocumented Workers Fund, that we can individually make sure that those families get what they deserve. And when we're talking about undocumented folks, we're talking about people who pay taxes, who make our city function. And so I really hope both as individuals on council, we can commit to fundraise and that we can also have a commitment from the city to support private funding that goes into this fund. And, and so, yeah, that's, I just want to make sure to both recognize and know and acknowledge undocumented people play a huge role in our society and in our city functioning the way it does. And, and just want to echo those sentiments that we should be looking for other ways in which we can support them.
Thank you, councilmember, Councilmember, Councilman Nowakowski?
Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Garcia that all those individuals that, that have businesses out there, that have individuals that are working hard to put food on our table, that are working in our grocery stores, that are working in our landscaping, cleaning offices and all that. I encourage all those organizations, all those companies, all those corporations, that they give, that they give to those families that are most needy out there in our community, those individuals that sacrifice working from sunup to sundown and that are here in this country, not only because they believe in this country, but to make a better life for themselves. My mother was an immigrant that came into this country, and now she has a son that's here on the city council. So I believe that there's many success stories out there, and I believe that we need to see organizations like this that help out the most needy. But, but those individuals that really help our communities by putting those necessities on, in our houses and on our tables. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, well said. Vice, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I also want to, want to be able to say, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. This is, everything that's happening right now is a health issue. We're in this community together, we all need to work together, everyone. I think our children don't, you know, like, are part of this community, and for their safety and for the safety of everyone, we just need to figure out how it is that we're, that we will be able to help everyone and how it is that we can all work together and try to make things work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We received six residents who were speaking and wish to support this, and four who were neutral, none against. Mayor? Councilwoman Pastor?
In recognizing that we have also added the refugee and asylum piece, in looking at the program summary of COVID-19 assistance, I would like to see some language change where it says "legal status." So do I have to ask the makers of the motion, or can staff come to the table to discuss, or what advice is there?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, we can certainly, I believe you're looking at a draft document that was not yet finalized. We are in the process of finalizing the document, so we can certainly make sure that we're referencing legal status in the language.
Okay, because this draft was given to the refugee community yesterday and said that they had to follow this, this document. And when we look at that, especially in the refugee community, it needs to state legal status. Legal status is that they're here in the United States and have legal rights.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, members of the council, that document was for our regular program. The program that was added yesterday, there will be a separate document for that with the specific requirements.
I know, but what I'm trying to say is both documents need to say legal status.
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, yes, we will make sure it says legal status, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any additional council member comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I think since, since we're hearing support from the council, I wonder if we can make a public amendment now, those of us that support the Undocumented Relief Fund. I'm willing to commit to it. I know yesterday we were able to push $3 million for refugees. I would hope we could do a similar amount amongst all of us to make sure that we can support the undocumented community.
I commit.
Mayor, we have a question.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I want to ask, are you going through an established duty that is able to distribute the money? How are you proposing to set up this fund, because it has to be through private sources?
So there's already, the mayor?
Yeah, I guess Councilmember Garcia, if you want to.
Yeah, Councilwoman Williams, there is already a coalition of folks that have established the Undocumented Relief Fund that's going to, through the Arizona Community Foundation. So they've already, I think, managed to, to fundraise about half a million dollars. And so I would suggest we join that coalition of organizations and support in continuing to fundraise.
Okay, and, and, I mean, just want to clarify a thing, you're asking council members to go out individually, fundraise for that particular fund, right?
Yes, and so if the decision of the council or our inability or willingness to move that these funds be available for everyone in our city, I think the least we could do is both commit as individuals and possibly as a city to push for private donors to assist in this fund.
Okay. I'm willing to support its private donors. I don't believe the city can put any money into it, nor should it at this point in time, but I'm willing to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I also very think this is worth our corporate sponsors and, and people in our community who are able to donate. Everyone contributes to the health of Phoenix, and we want to know everyone is impacted by COVID-19, and we have to get through this together. We have had an additional caller on the line, so we'll go to the Vice Mayor and then to Mukhtar.
Yeah, I, I'm also committing to this and helping to raise money for this fund as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now for our staff, we will go to Mukhtar to testify on item 32.
Thank you very much, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes, I had a hard time getting it in yesterday. I'm, I'm very happy you guys voted to support refugee residents and asylum residents. Today, I wanted to talk about undocumented members of our community. Refugees and undocumented have the similar jobs, we have neighbors, we work together, and, and whatever the city could do for them is highly appreciated. And, and I know most of the council member and the mayor has been very active in our community. Whatever you guys could do for undocumented family members is highly appreciated. And thank you very much for being a great leaders in this crisis, and we appreciate everything you guys doing for the city and for our families. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience with our technology as well. Do we have any additional council member comments? Roll call.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Mayor?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Vallego?
Yes.
That's a seven to one.
We next move to item 33, which is, uh, the contracts to implement our small business relief program. Again, we would be partnering with the Arizona Community Foundation, who has been such a key partner for the city of Phoenix as we work to support our community and, and those impacted by COVID-19. Uh, this is an item that it would include up to $12 million of support for our small businesses, including our micro enterprises and our restaurants, those who we think have had less access to other aid programs. We know that our small businesses, our restaurants are part of the reason we have a great city that.
I didn't tell the, that she's going to house?
Excuse me?
What?
I'm not, okay. Um, do we have a motion on item 33?
Yes, I have a motion to move item 33. Second?
A motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilwoman Pastor. Uh, council member comments or questions on our small business assistance program?
Exciting.
No.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just really want to thank Chris Mackey and her staff. From day one, she's been out there calling all the small businesses within my, um, within my district and I know throughout the whole city of Phoenix. I just really want to thank their efforts in making sure that everybody is taken care of. One of the biggest things that we heard was some of these mom and pop small businesses weren't receiving any federal funds or, or help from the COVID funds. So this is why I was advocating hard to make sure that we can raise at least, I, I think the total is going to be about 15.7 million dollars that go towards these small businesses. Just within the downtown area, over the last 10 years, we have over 200 bars and restaurants that are basically locally owned and 80% of them. So I just really want to thank all those individuals and also all those, um, individuals that need help. Um, you need to go out there and we're going to continue to educate people that there's money out there, that they can apply for it. It's not a lot of money, but it's going to help out in the long run. So thank you, um, to all my colleagues for all their support and also to all the small businesses. We're there to help you all out. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well said. Yep. This, this is building on the great success from our first round of, uh, funding led, led by the Industrial Development Authority. And as Councilman Noakowski said, some of our great businesses, including many that we can see from City Hall benefited in round one, but we, we heard from our companies that they needed more help. And these are programs that I think will target those who had the hardest time getting that, that federal aid, including people who didn't, entrepreneurs who didn't qualify for unemployment and some of our smallest businesses. So, um, an exciting, an exciting vote for the city. And I agree with Councilman Noakowski, our economic development folks have done a great job just talking to our businesses about what they need to navigate through COVID-19. Um, any additional council member comments?
Mayor, I just, it sounds like there's a phone that's maybe not muted and it might be one of our public callers. I don't know if staff can check on that, but I think that's the noises we're hearing.
A, a good, good suggestion. All right, I think we are ready for roll call.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Vallego?
Yes.
That's a seven to one.
Wonderful. We will be investing in additional $12 million to support our small businesses. We next move to item 35, which is an eight-hour rule request related to, uh, researching an ordinance related to the tourism and hospitality industry. Um, these are items that allow staff to work on developing public policy. And, um, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion to approve item 35.
Second?
Did I get more information on what we're going to do with the industry?
Mayor, Councilmember Williams, the request from the Vice Mayor, uh, as, as attached is for us to research, uh, potential, uh, ordinance related to, uh, employees in the tourism hospitality ind- industry. Uh, so what would happen would be that the city attorney's office would, would review that concept. If there is any input from council members to look at, we would take that. We would review other jurisdictions. We would review the, um, we would review the state laws that applies to any such ordinance and we could take input from stakeholders if that's the wish of the council. We would then return with information to the council, uh, for further consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, yes, this, I think has a lot to do with public health and we've had a couple, a couple conversations about this already. Um, but I think as many of the peo, as everyone knows, many of the people that have been hit the hardest with this pandemic have been those in the hospitality and tourism industry. I think we as, we all need to work together towards reopening our economy and we need to find solutions on how we do it in such a way that we're able to open in a way that is safe, um, for people to come back to work. And I think for these reasons, I am very supportive on moving this motion forward. Um, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski?
Uh, Mayor, I'm very supportive of this. I also sit on the, um, Visit Phoenix, um, board and I know that there's a lot of training and, and conversations going on within the industry of tourism and hospitality, um, making sure that everybody has, uh, input on this. It's something that we need to really make sure that the workers are taken care of and that they come into a safe environment. Um, 100% supportive of this. And, uh, including some of the stakeholders, um, that I mentioned, would be great to, to see them involved with this also.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, Vice Mayor, we would be happy as part of our eight-hour plus efforts to, um, seek input from stakeholders in the industry and, uh, the employment sector.
Mayor?
Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I'm really supportive of this. I think times have changed and I hope the, the value we put in workers has changed as well. I think there was inconsistencies before, but now with COVID and people coming back to work, we need to make sure things such as breaks, um, pay and that we're just taking care of workers, especially in this industry. What we've seen as a pattern in this industry is the corporations, whether it be the airlines, um, our, our own airports are all getting large chunks of money to make sure that they stay afloat. Um, and so I feel like this has hopefully shifted in a place where we need to make sure that the workers are protected, that workers are taken care of and that we give them the true value they deserve, especially around the airport, um, where, you know, we, we are America's friendliest airport and we are that because of the workers that are there.
Thank you. We received, uh, two public comments in support of this item online and we have several individuals wishing to address the council. We will go to them now, beginning with Don Amadon, followed by Nora Felix. Don, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, council, uh, members. My name is Don Amadon. Um, I'm a proud employee of a company that supplies services to my fellow citizens that use Sky Harbor Airport. Uh, I have been for, followed by L G Sky, Sky 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. While I was one of the lucky ones to get, uh, unemployment insurance benefits and my health insurance is being, uh, uh, covered by, um, the company for, for 90 days. It will be coming, running out at the end of June. And, uh, since I have chronic health issues, I'm now very worried about, uh, what is going to happen, uh, when that happens. Because, um, because my going back to work depends on airport flights and, and it doesn't appear to be an end to this, uh, an end to this, um, I have received, uh, no updates from the company as to when I will be coming back, uh, from the furlough and what safeguards for testing and prevention will be in place when I do go back. Uh, I'm at it, I'm of an age that I'm, uh, at greater risk of the devastating effects of this, uh, virus. I'm hoping you and, and are considering strong policies or, um, ordinances, uh, to help protect, uh, myself and my fellow airport workers when we do get to go back, uh, to work. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you for your time, consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Nora will be followed by Henry Montalvo.
Good afternoon. My name is Nora Felix and I work at Sky Harbor for HMS. And I am proud to work to serve our city and welcome visitors to Phoenix. And I'm currently furloughed for almost three months. I wasn't able to get any income or even unemployment since I am on immigration process. Yes, I had to use all my PTO to keep my healthcare, to keep my insurance. And I am also concerned of running out of income and about our safety to return to work, especially financially. It's going to force us to go back because our bills are going to be piling up. But up to this point, I haven't heard anything about our managers, no updates on when to go back. I hope you can help us find relief and I hope you consider a policy to protect and help hos- hospitality workers during this time. Thank you and thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. Henry will be followed by Vincent Ambrosino.
Hello, my name is Henry Montalvo. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Hi, my name is Henry Montalvo. I currently work, uh, for a company, uh, Aramark, um, at the Phoenix Convention Center. Uh, we have been furlonged since, uh, March 13th, since the first sighting of, uh, this pandemic. Uh, currently, uh, my girlfriend is, uh, also worked, also worked with us. Uh, she's currently pregnant at the moment and we're furlonged and she's applied for unemployment benefits, um, two weeks after, uh, after I did, and she didn't receive a response at all. Um, I understand that, you know, the, the system is stressed, but as also, uh, I would like to know what, what is going to happen, um, as well as, you know, my, my concerns as well. Uh, hopefully you, uh, hopefully the council can find something, uh, can find a, a solution for, for us to return back with safely, uh, you know, and to return safely, uh, back to, back to work. Uh, unfortunately, we deal with, um, 1,000 to 6,000 people a day as we provide meals, uh, assignments, beverages, coffee, um, continued, uh, throughout the, throughout the, the whole season and events. Uh, we, hey, we hold most of major events as well and we would like to see what, what implementation would you guys provide for us as well as, 'cause, you know, I have family that's going to go back to work. Unfortunately, right now, my girlfriend is working, uh, under these conditions as well as, you know, she, we're expecting a child as well. Um, the conditions are not ideal for her and she's tried to apply for several times and we have not received anything. Um, hopefully this is going to be resolved as soon as possible. But, um, rather unfortunately, I'd like to see what you guys, uh, what the council has in mind to provide everything for you.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, thank you.
Vincent will be followed by Laura Perez.
Hi, Vincent Ambrosino. I also work at the Convention Center. I'm proud to serve our city and welcome visitors to Phoenix. I've been doing that for over a decade. Um, right now, I'm furloughed. Um, I get a problem with the unemployment insurance. Um, the impact it's had on my family, we're stressed about paying rent. Um, you know, my wife's hours were cut down, my son's hours were cut down. So, you know, we've had to make significant life changes. I'm worried about the health insurance. Um, uh, I do have some issues too. Um, and when it runs out, I mean, I don't know how many, continue paying my premiums. Uh, going back to work at the Convention Center, we do, uh, cater to large amounts, uh, you know, a large amount of people. And, you know, to, how are we going to go back to doing that? And to be safe, then we need some training. Um, I have disabled family and elderly people in my family that I've had to keep, uh, distance from because I'm afraid of, you know, this coronavirus. And I don't know, uh, what the future looks like here. We haven't had any updates from any management, you know, letting us know anything on how we're going to move forward from here. And basically, I'm worried. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Laura will be followed by Sandy Villatoro Perro.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Laura. I work at the Renaissance, um, Hotel in downtown Phoenix. I'm going to be translating for Mireya.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mireya. Trabajo para el Sheraton, uh, in Downton. En por unos diez años. Yo creo que todos estamos preocupados por lo que estamos pasando. Es algo que nos ha afectado a todos. Yo tengo casi tres meses ya sin trabajo. Y mi esposo también. Hemos metido el desempleo, pero hasta ahora no hemos recibido nada. Este, me siento estresada porque... Tengo un niño de cinco años y... No, este, no puedo perder la seguridad por él. No necesito, pero también necesito trabajar. Uh, pero sí tengo miedo por él porque si yo me enfermo, igual enfermo a mi familia. Entonces, uh, el lugar donde trabajamos es un lugar donde... Pues viene de diferentes lugares y necesitamos protección para poder, um, para poder cuidarlo con nuestra familia.
Um, Mireya has worked at the Sheraton in downtown Phoenix for almost 10 years. She has been laid off for almost three months at this point, has applied for unemployment, but has not received anything yet. She's very, very worried about her family, about making sure that she's able to continue, um, paying for insurance. She can't lose uninsured, her insurance because she has, um, a young child at home that she needs to make sure that he's able to, um, stay healthy. But she also is anxious to return back to work, but is nervous enough, um, about making her family sick. Thank you. Thank you.
No, no worries.
Thank you. And the city does provide interpretation services. We would welcome if Spanish speakers can let us know ahead of time. Sandy will be speaking next, followed by Michelle Hornstein.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sandy Villatoro Perez. I work at the Sheraton downtown Phoenix. I am proud to work and serve our city to welcome visitors to Phoenix. I am currently laid off and even though the city is open again, we will still be closed until August. When everything closed due to COVID-19, I didn't know what to do. I was scared mostly because I have a seven-month-old baby and I was afraid if I lost my insurance, she wouldn't be able to get her checkup, as most of you know, are essential to babies in their first year. My company said that we would be able to keep our insurance so long as we paid our half and that tends to be really hard when unemployment doesn't approve you or move your account along. The stimulus check helped, but we don't have other, we do have other bills to pay and it was only so much. And unfortunately for me, my account was closed and I had to reapply. I was on time to file my claim, yet I was denied. What's going to happen if unemployment runs out? I've been working for five years with the company and why am I not allowed to get help when I ask for it? I know that my employer and the state are considering to reopen more operations, but honestly, I don't think we are ready. First and foremost, because considering how not even our healthcare workers don't have the right of protective equipment, they need to protect themselves from this virus, what makes you think that a simple housekeeper like myself is going to get anything like that? And if you really look at it, there isn't people that, who have not been wanting to wear masks because there's always gonna be those people that are gonna say, "I just don't wanna wear a mask." If I get exposed to this virus, even if I don't contract it myself, I can bring it home to where my two children and my husband reside. And to be completely honest, I'm not too fond of sacrificing their lives, or anyone's lives for that matter, to quote, "save our economy." I don't mind returning to work, but I know I won't be 100% protected whether it be with year or with some sort of law that says I won't get fired if, God forbid, I do end up getting sick or one of my children or husband gets sick from the virus. I hope you can find, I hope you can help us find relief and I hope you consider a policy to protect and help hospitality workers during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle will be our last speaker on this item.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Hornstein and I work for SSP America in Sky Harbor Airport. I have proudly served our city and welcomed visitors to our state for the last five and a half years. My last day of work was March fifteenth and since being furloughed, I have been very concerned about my financial stability. I applied for unemployment, nutrition assistance, and rent relief of those programs. I have only been approved for unemployment. I was told that due to the extra $600 per week, I make too much money to qualify for the nutrition assistance. I applied for the rental assistance the morning the program launched and I have yet to hear back from anyone. I have uploaded all required documents, which was very difficult given how everything needed to be formatted, but I have just been forced to wait and watch all of my bills pile up. I'm extremely concerned about what will happen once the federal unemployment runs out as my bills are $2,000 a month, not including food, gas, or anything for my daughter, Noah. I would like to add that my company has not paid for our health insurance once during this time and we are only covered because my union is paying for it. I cannot afford to lose my health insurance as I have struggled with health issues over the last several years and without my insurance, I would have had to pay almost $7,000 for all of my CT scans, blood work, ultrasounds, follow-up visits, and medications during the months of March and April alone. I know my employer and the state are considering reopening more operations, which presents me with a very difficult decision. Choose between losing my home or choose to put the health of myself and my daughter at risk. We have received no communication from the company as to what to expect or when we'll return and I do not trust that they will make the right call when it comes to keeping us safe. I'm asking you today to please remember me, remember my daughter, Noah, please remember the airport workers who make Sky Harbor America's friendliest airport. We are looking to you to help ensure that we are also America's safest airport. We are counting on you to help us find relief and consider a policy to protect the hospitality workers during this trying time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes public comments. Councilmember comments.
Mayor, just, none of your comments. I think we're getting messages again to our office that there's three folks waiting to speak on this item and they're not able to. Is the most helpful thing to get names or are they just not popping up? I guess it's a question for Tony.
I guess, yeah, a question for our staff. Did we miss?
Mayor and councilmembers, on this item thirty-five, all of the speakers were accounted for except for Lucia Salinas and Tracy Gunderson. They are not on the line. I'm checking with IT just to make sure.
Tony, they say that they're there, but that they're not being allowed to speak.
Did they register using their own name or did they register using someone else's name?
Their name is printed on the agenda. So it's the two names that Tony just mentioned, there's two other people that are on.
I'm checking with our IT staff that has access to the computer system and neither one of those individuals is on the line.
Hold on, we're communicating.
I do see a Kellen Wilson. Is that perhaps the right number?
Probably.
Okay. Could our IT staff please unmute Kellen Wilson? And we would just ask that as members of the public register, if they call in, it would be helpful if they use their name. Kellen, or whoever is on the phone with Kellen, the floor is yours.
Hi, this is Kellen, but I'm gonna have, I called Tracy through the phone to try and get her to speak. So Tracy, do you wanna go ahead? The council is listening.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak in the afternoon. My name is Tracy Gunderson and I've worked for HMS House for nine years. Absolutely love my job and I don't wanna lose it nor can I afford to lose it. I'm too tired of waiting for my husband. My husband's health provides for our family, helps my employment for all of our health insurance needs as well as financial needs. I've been furloughed since November March. I said with you last time I spoke that my husband was mauled by a pit bull a few weeks ago and I'm a losing survivor. Without my health insurance, we could have lost everything when my husband's accident happened. All the hospital bills and doctor appointments could have completely wiped us out. My unemployment is at the asset now. However, once the extra federal contribution runs out, it's gonna be extremely hard to cover all of our household expenses. We have our turn forced to sell several of our assets to make ends meet. I didn't have to use my PTO to keep our health insurance yet. However, HMS House has stated that they will no longer pay their portion of our health insurance on May thirty-first. In April, my health insurance bill was over $1,050 and I had to pay it out of pocket. And I'm scared to find out what my insurance invoice is going to be once HMS House stops their portion. Am I gonna be able to afford it? Am I gonna lose it? I'm very concerned about my healthcare running out right now and I'm also extremely worried about what happens when the extra federal contribution, but employment runs out. I know that my employer and the state are considering reopening more operations, however, without health insurance, my concerns about returning to work is very scary and important. What if I catch the virus? Bring home to my family? What will happen if I don't have health insurance? Lose our home? I'm concerned about having proper safety protections in place. I feel worse financially to return to work, not just for the income, but to be able to afford my health insurance costs. I'm worried about whether my employer brings me back before the federal contribution runs out. I hope you can help us find relief and I hope you consider a policy to protect and help hospitality workers at this time. Thank you for your time today and hearing my concerns and God bless you all.
Thank you. And I just wanna remind people participating in our system, if you use someone else's WebEx account, we may not be able to identify that it is you. Do we have any additional councilmember comments or questions? Roll call.
Yes.
No Makowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes, and I have a comment. I just think we have to be very patient in this whole process. It's very challenging, especially for the public with the new rules and how we access. And it's also very difficult and challenging when you speak another language and are trying to understand how the process is working and we're just, this whole system is just challenging all the way around.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Guardado.
Yes.
Vallego.
Yes.
We next go to item fifty-one, which is amendment with the lease with the Arizona State Lottery at Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item fifty-one. Second.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from both Councilman Pastor and Williams, but I think we heard Pastor first. Any councilmember comments or questions? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
No Makowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Vallego.
Yes.
Passes seven-one.
Come on, Waring.
We next move to item eighty-nine, which is the northeast corner of Forty-second Street and Peakview Road. This is a item in Councilman Waring's district. So we have one individual requesting to speak, so if it's okay with Councilman Waring, we will take Ron's comment and then go to a motion or Councilman Waring, would you, what is your preference?
That's perfectly fine, ma'am.
Wonderful. And we did receive one card in support of this item and I'm sorry, I don't, can't remember if I announced the last item, or item thirty-five, we had two cards, I think I did say we had two cards in line on support. Okay, so we will then begin with Ron for testimony on item eighty-nine. Ron, the floor is yours. Oh, Ron just muted again. Ron is unmuted.
I'm sorry. No, I'm the applicant. I'm all for it.
Oh. What a beautiful testimony. Excellent. Unless Councilman Waring has any questions for the applicant, I will turn to him for a motion.
I like the testimony. It was short, simple, easy to understand. That's perfect. I'm of approval of item eighty-nine.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and I think I heard first the second from Councilwoman Stark. Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
No Makowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
I really wanna say yes.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes, did you guys hear me? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Vallego.
Yes.
Passes eight-zero.
Real quick, this is Alan Stevenson. I just wanna clarify for the record that that approval was per the Planning Commission recommendation, because that's what was before the council, just to clarify.
Yes. Yes, mayor, it was.
Wonderful. So we have confirmed for the record that we approved that item per the Planning Commission recommendation. We next move to item ninety. I am going to hear testimony on ninety and ninety-one, which are related cases together. We'll begin with a staff report and then go to a public hearing where each side will have five minutes. I will turn it, and this is a case related to the zoning at the southeast corner of Thirty-First Street and Camelback Road. I will turn it to our Planning Director, Alan Stevenson.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. This request is a planning hearing officer request to modify stipulations of previously approved zoning for a parcel at the southeast corner of Thirty-First Street and Camelback Road. There are two cases because they were zoned separate, but they deal with one development project and so that's why you have the two separate cases. But as you noted, we can hear them all together in just separate motions at the end. This map here shows you the area in green is item ninety and the other area is item ninety-one. And item ninety-one is just a P1 surface parking lot area that was rezoned separately for additional parking for this subject site, which was a restaurant previously housed at Donovan Steakhouse and now is proposed to have a new restaurant that will move into this establishment from just up the street. You see the proposed stipulations here that are proposed to be modifying to allow this to happen and so there are stipulations regarding general conformance for the site plan, conditional approval that was already met because it was approved and built, investing stipulation as well as trees and a few other stipulations. The principal, one that the neighbors have concerns with, is stipulation number six, which is the egress to Thirty-First Street. And the other items that are seeking to be modified are item ninety-one are just the steps that are listed on the screen there. That particular parcel does not have access back into the neighborhood. It's accessed out through the commercial parking lot out to Camelback Road. In this case, the planning hearing officer did recommend approval of modifications and additional stipulations and denial of the other PHO, but approval with some more significant modifications to that one. The Camelback East Village Planning Committee chose not to review the request. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of both the items pursuant to the planning hearing officer recommendation. This just shows the surrounding zoning for the particular parcel, which is principally, you know, commercial zoning with retail centers across the street and then commercial office buildings to the east of it and then some multifamily and commercial further down the street on Camelback Road. There's the more blow-up of that particular area and you can see the access issue is off to Thirty-First here and the neighborhood concerns are about traffic going down to the south in the neighborhood instead of turning and going up to the north, the Camelback Road, when it exits the new proposed site. This is the proposed site plan that is a significantly reduced footprint over the Donovan Steakhouse that was there prior to it. In addition, there is substantially more parking and those were some of the issues that had concerns with access when the site was originally zoned. You can see there's the immediate blow-up of the Thirty-First Avenue connection, or Thirty-First Street connection, I should say. Stipulation number six is the one the planning hearing officer put as part of this request to allow for either no access to be provided or for the developer to work with the Street Transportation Department on a standard detail for a restricted left-turn egress as approved by the Streets Department. And so the applicant has developed a concept under stipulation six A that they're currently working through with the Streets Department to have approved if the council approves this overall request. This just shows that standard kind of detail and so this is what the applicant and the Streets Department will be looking at on refining if the project is approved and goes forward. Staff. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any council member questions for Alan? All right, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Each side will have five times if, I'm sorry, each side will have five minutes. If you would like to reserve some of your time to speak after the other side has spoken, please let me know, but you have five minutes in whatever form you would like. We'll begin with Bill Lally representing the applicant.
Mayor, council members. Thank you, mayor, council members. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. For the record, Bill Lally, 2525 East Camelback Road, today representing Hillstone Restaurant. Hillstone Restaurant Corporation has purchased the existing Donovan's, or the closed Donovan Restaurant, to open up a new restaurant. The existing Hillstone Restaurant will remain down the street in its existing location. The new restaurant will operate a little bit different menu, but very much the same high-quality restaurant that you know and love on Camelback Road. So, as Alan went through the site plan changes, the PHO is in front of you, not for a zone change, not for a land use change, but simply a change to the site plan. The site plan for Donovan's, for many years, was 11,000-square-foot restaurant. Hillstone will be knocking down the restaurant, blading the entire site, and replacing it with a less than 5,000-square-foot restaurant. The building today is about 25 feet tall. The new building will be about 13 feet tall. The new building will be 65 feet north of existing residential, where today the building sits 27 feet away from existing residential. The new parking calculation will be two and a half times that of the required parking. Today, the new restaurant will be required to have 38 parking spots. We will be providing 94 parking spots. The overhead lines, power lines that are on the site will be underground, and we will be limited to two access points to the site as opposed to three that the Donovan's restaurant had. The existing Donovan's Restaurant hours will be maintained. The Hillstone hours of operation will be the same as this new restaurant concept. As we went through the redo of the site plan, the access point, which was a private easement to the east, to the office building, went away when the Donovan's Restaurant went away. Therefore, we were limited to just Camelback Road and 31st Street access points. In order to maintain proper traffic through the sites and to and from the sites, we need to have two access points. Therefore, the request in front of you is to remain, keep the 31st driveway access open, but modified as the PHO is required. Hillstone did not propose the pork chop condition. The PHO saw that as a compromise between the neighbors and the applicant, and therefore the applicant here tonight is in full support of the PHO's compromise in front of you, and will continue to work with the Planning Department to make sure that that access drive is not used as a main drive, and will be narrowed down to look and feel and be used as a secondary drive. Be happy to answer any questions, mayor and council.
Thank you. We have two individuals, Colleen and Michael, online with concerns about this case. You are welcome to decide who goes first, but why don't we begin with Colleen? You have five minutes total to be divided as you see fit.
Thank you very much. This is Colleen Zuretti. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and City Councilmembers. Thank you for your time today. My name is Colleen Zuretti. I reside at 4822 North 31st Place. My husband and I have been homeowners in Brentwood Estates, the neighborhood directly south of the proposed Hillstone Restaurant, for 20 years, and I have been the president of the Neighborhood Association for 17 years. For the record, while the neighbors welcome Hillstone, we are in opposition to modify the 4194-6, stipulation six, which would allow patrons and employees to use the driveway to access North 31st Street. The stipulation was written to ensure whatever necessary measures be taken to preclude any use of the driveway by restaurant patrons or deliveries into the neighborhood from the adjacent commercial business. There's been no supporting data to defend a secondary patron access to North 31st Street is required for this restaurant to be successful, especially considering the restaurant's smaller footprint and seating capacity. All prior establishments at this site successfully operated, having only one patron access point at East Camelback Road. There were two additional access points, one intended for valet-only, and the other being the one-way emergency drive. Brentwood Estates homeowners overwhelmingly support stipulation six not be modified. Letters and signatures from more than 80% of Brentwood Estates homeowners were submitted to the city to not modify stipulation six. Beginning in January of 2020, ILO with numerous neighbors repeatedly asked the applicant to not seek access to North 31st Street due to historic data related to traffic issues in the neighborhood from prior restaurants. Unlike an office building, the restaurant will operate seven days a week during afternoon and evening hours. These are the same times our neighborhood families will be the most active outside circulating the neighborhood. Over the years, the need to preserve Brentwood Estates has been a repeated concern cited at numerous City of Phoenix zoning hearings. Committee members understood the slippery slope and vulnerability of our neighborhood if development boundaries were not established, particularly when a home was torn down and is now the zoned P1. North 31st Street is a local street that provides residence access to and from their homes only. North 31st Street is not a collector's street. It does not lead to other locations or points of destination. Commercial patrons should not be allowed to access and travel through a residential neighborhood. Please note the dangerously close proximity of the abutting existing driveway to Brentwood Estates Neighborhood Association. The service driveway is approximately seven feet from the abutting residential property line to the south, and shares the same entrance into Brentwood Estates Neighborhood. There's no plan or method to monitor or enforce traffic from accessing our residential neighborhood. A three-quarter movement driveway accessing North 31st Street is dangerous to the families of Brentwood Estates. Any stipulation modification must be prohibited. The conceptual plan depicts a 26-wide drive with a pork chop allowing three-quarter movement, attempting to limit left turns only. No final approval for a 26-foot wide drive by the City of Phoenix Street engineers has been made. Up to a 40-foot wide drive may be required for three-quarter movement, as pointed out in the PHO summary. Furthermore, one of the three-quarter movements has direct access from the Brentwood Estates Neighborhood onto North 31st Street. Ultimately, patrons will seek the route of least resistance, and our neighborhood will become a gateway to and from the restaurant. In conclusion, we want to protect our neighborhood from the increased traffic risk and potential dangers. We are confident Hillstone will be successful without a secondary patron access point onto North 31st Street. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this matter. We appreciate your support of our neighborhood to not allow modification of stipulation six. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I will defer any remaining time to Mike Dietz.
Wonderful, thank you. Why don't we go to Mike Dietz now, and then if council members have questions, we will come back for questions. Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you for your time today. My wife and I have been homeowners in the neighborhood immediately south of the proposed Hillstone Restaurant for 15 years now. We believe the proposed signage would not be sufficient to deter drivers from turning south on 31st Street and entering the neighborhood. First, the modification to the stipulation is unnecessary. Donovan Steakhouse, the previous restaurant at this location, operated successfully with this stipulation in effect. It is simply not plausible that the new Hillstone Restaurant would now require new access to 31st Street, especially considering the smaller footprint and seating capacity of the proposed restaurant. Second, our neighborhood would be adversely impacted by the modification to stipulation six, which would undoubtedly result in increased traffic. We are concerned that the increase in drivers cutting through our streets will bring noise, nuisance, and even potential dangers. And I'll finish up by adding that the pork chop that is proposed simply is not sufficient. I think if we're all honest, if we see a pork chop, and it, there's an opportunity to seek the path of least resistance and potentially cut through the neighborhood, I think many drivers in Phoenix would choose to ignore the pork chop. Additionally, pork chop does nothing for restaurant patrons who want to cut through the neighborhood to enter their restaurant. My last comment is, for neighbors, it's not a matter of, it's not a matter of approving the restaurant. I think we are all supportive of the restaurant, and it will happen, and they have already invested money into the project. It is only a matter of one item, stipulation six, and we request your support in retaining the current language related to stipulation six. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. For our staff, did the applicant, the applicant did have additional time?
Yes, mayor, they have two minutes left.
Okay. Can we go to the applicant and see if there's anything additional?
Yes, mayor, council members, this is Bill Lally, the applicant. In a quick rebuttal, I wanted to mention a few things. Again, the Donovan's Restaurant operated for many years with three access points, one on Camelback, one on 31st Street, and one into a private commercial center to the east. The neighbors are now asking Hillstone to operate a brand-new restaurant with one access point only on Camelback Road. So, that is really the condition that they're requesting today, is to have one access point where the prior restaurant that is not operating had three access points. So, that's really down at the heart of the moment, what they're asking for, is one access point. The other comments related to the driveway, or 31st Avenue being a private drive and only suitable for Brentwood Estates neighbors and drivers. This is a public road off of Camelback Road. This condition where commercial properties have access to a similar road, up and down Camelback Road, has existed for many, many years in many, many different conditions, almost in the exact same spot up and down Camelback Road. So, there's no history that would show that those neighbors or those neighborhoods are impacted. This is not a new land use being introduced to a neighborhood. This is a restaurant that's being cut in half in terms of height and size and capacity with double the parking. The pork chop was proposed by the city as a legitimate deterrent. It's a legitimate deterrent that does deter traffic. It's not optimal for the restaurant users, but it will push traffic to Camelback. So, the assumption that everyone's going to break the law and drive over the pork chop is just not feasible. The City of Phoenix Streets Department proposed it as a legitimate deterrent. It's a compromise, and we support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for any of the folks who have spoken today? Okay, then I, hearing none, am going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We will begin by taking a vote on item 90. I would normally turn to the council member representing the area, but Councilman DeCicio is not with us, so, Councilwoman Williams.
Councilman DeCicio called me because he has a family issue and couldn't be here today, and asked me if I would make the motion on this item and the next item, and he recommends to approve the item per the Planning Commission of May 7th this year for approval.
I'll second that.
Wonderful, thank you. We have a motion to approve for the Planning Commission, May 7th meeting, and a second from Councilman Noakowski. Any additional council member comments? Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
That's a eight-zero.
Woo, Waring.
We next move to the relating case, item 91. Councilwoman Williams, you did such a, I guess for our Planning Director, we can go to the motion?
Mayor, members of council, yes. I would just note for the record that this one needs also to adopt the related ordinance.
All right.
He knows to remind me.
Councilwoman Williams did such a nice job. Will you help us again?
Again, I am moving to approve this per the planning hearing on May 7th. The recommendation must be approved and to adopt the related ordinance.
I'll second that, mayor.
Wonderful, thank you again, Councilman Noakowski. Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
That's a eight-zero.
Wonderful, thank you. We next move to item 92, which is an agreement to provide onsite testing services. I think a passion of almost all of our City Council has been to improve access to testing to, for our community, including those who use public transportation and do not have access to a vehicle. Our staff, led by Milton DeHoney, has been working very hard to make sure that we have better access to testing. There was a tough article on the front page of the Arizona Republic today showing that we are ranking, I think, 50th in per capita testing out of 51. So, it still remains an issue where the city can be a partner. We are not the public health leads for Maricopa County, but we can all do our part. Want to thank our staff so much for their hard work, and for our private sector partners as well for being willing to be innovative, to use a location that may not have been the first place that we would have thought of for doing testing, but that actually has great traffic flow and will be a service to our residents. Councilwoman Pastor represents the area, and thank you to Councilwoman Pastor for pushing for testing, whether it be for our community or our first responders. So, a job well done by our city staff, and wanted to thank them. Any additional council member comments? Roll call.
Mayor, we need a motion.
Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I make a motion to approve item 92.
Second.
Second.
Continued good work by our staff, just to make sure we make it official. Roll call.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Mayor, a comment? I'm a yes, and looking forward to Southwest Phoenix getting a pop-up also.
Well said.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
That's a eight-zero.
Woo, Waring.
Unanimous vote. We are supporting additional testing in the City of Phoenix. Thank you to all. That is our final agendized item. We do have two members of the public who are here to address the council. I will turn to our city attorney to provide a word of background about this portion of our meeting.
Thank you, mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the City Council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the City Council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We will begin with Elizabeth Venable, followed by Alicia McKinley. Elizabeth, the floor is yours.
Mayor, we're not receiving any audio from Elizabeth. We do have her unmuted, but are not receiving any audio on our end.
Elizabeth, can you hear us? We cannot hear you.